Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vator City Council. It is 6:03 PM on April 26, 2023. Roll call. Here.
Here.
Jason is... City Hall.
Mayor's report?
Yeah.
Michael President?
Here. President.
All right, we have a call. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. As has been for a little while now, there are vacancies on the planning committee. Interested candidates should inquire at City Hall or with myself. F Street dedication update. We're still receiving some letters and from the residents back there. So we haven't compiled actual numbers yet on who's interested in dedicating the street back to the city or not. But it seems so far the overwhelming response is a negative on that, including the folks that can't... ...and asking the city to pursue this. So once again, probably at the next meeting, I'll probably have a roll up of all that information for you. So I think what happened was when they got the letters that actually... From the city that seemed legitimate and legal and everything, it kind of scared them. So I don't know. We'll see. I'll put together those answers for you. And then road ownership update. Commissioner Brenner did get back to us and said they're still working on that. If you remember, the county wanted to dissolve... ...Northern regarding the easement for that road. And so we kind of pushed back on that and said, "The city doesn't have an agreement. The county has an agreement. The county should maintain their agreement." So still waiting on county to get back to us. Property purchase. They're on 506 and A Street. The environmental assessment's done. There were no findings, and so we're moving on towards closing on that. Wastewater treatment plant update. We're working with Civil West and Ecology to possibly use the remaining funds from the grant for the wastewater plant to fix the eighth, fix A Street between Eighth and Ninth. Because of all the heavy truck traffic that was going through there, we think we can justify that. So we still have probably over $150,000 left. It's just grants. And so... Things like that. So we're working on that. Annexation update. So if you remember at the last council meeting, we voted on the May 10th for the public hearings. So those are upcoming. Whatever the next step is after that, planners will walk us through that. And community center funding. Today, we had a representative from Congresswoman... Who's in Camp Perez's office here, and she talked to us for a while about different methods that we could go by, go about getting funding for a community center. And so she's going to get back to us about grants and things like that. So just trying to network between state and federal sources on that, since it's quite a bit of money. That's what I've been up to. Council reports. Members of the council have anything to report?
Not yet.
We got a new neighbor.
A neighbor?
New neighbor. He's sick. He's in the hospital. I'm hoping to try and get on the park board.
Oh, okay.
I'm a little too...
Definitely. Speaking of... A little bit, one more mayor's report. I've heard that one of the local fire commissioners, one of our three fire commissioners, is not going to run for reelection. And so if anyone is interested in running for election for a fire commissioner, none of you, by the way, because you're here and you're mine. But if you know anybody else, and they don't even have to live in the city limits, obviously, anywhere in the district. So that's from about Telegraph Road all the way to Ryder Wood and then north on... One Lock Vator to about Comer Road and north on South Military, not quite to McLaughlin. So that's our district. So anyone in there could run for fire commissioner. So if anyone wants to know what fire commissioner is like, it's a lot like what you do. There's vouchers, a monthly meeting, all that stuff. More council reports. I do not have any changes to the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda for... City Council meeting Thursday, April 26th.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
Motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from four, 13, 20, 23.
Motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second of Ms. McIntosh. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Make a motion that we approve voucher for the end of April 2023 at $39,045.39. Total April 2023 of $86,020.4.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second? Second of Mr. Hall. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. Planning committee, again, they did not have a meeting this month. They didn't have anything to cover. Again, that's going to change here shortly with annexation information. And then also coming up after, in July, the funding from the state comes available for Growth Management Act updates, comprehensive plan updates, all that kind of stuff. And so our planners are going to be pretty active in that. So the planning committee. Parks Board, they had a Chips for Chails event this last weekend. Again, very successful. Lots and lots of people came. They had three really large pickup truck load with the chips created. The truck had high sides, you know, and everything in it. And so lots and lots of chips that they still, they have more chips than they got around to spread the other day. So more chips than we need down there. So another great event.
Lions Club brought out there.
Yeah, Lions Club came and provided food for the volunteers. So yeah, their hot dog, what is it called?
I don't know what she mean.
Tweeny, weenie wagon? Weiner wagon? Is that what she called it? It's, it looks like, it looks like a giant hot dog on a trailer with an umbrella and everything, like you see in the movies. I heard there was like a bidding war for it. Who'd have thought? Everyone wants one. All right, moving on to city business. Item number one, council to discuss the 2024- through 2029 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. So the TIP is part of the Growth Management Act. Every city that participates in the Growth Management Act, which is all of them, has to update this every year. The deadline is end of June. It requires a public hearing. Obviously, that takes time to advertise and all that. And so generally, we just remove any roads that were worked on throughout the year and update the dates, maybe change the prices a little bit. It's kind of a wish list. If anything else, it's not a mandatory list. In the case that has all the roads on it that we'd like to get worked on. This does have all the roads that are going to get worked on this summer through that... The TIB grant that we've been waiting on. So if anyone saw in the paper this week, Napavine solicited... Solicited for bids for that project, by the way, $1.7 million multi-city project. Toledo's part of that. And so it's in the paper this week, the solicitation.
In the past couple meetings, have we talked about 10th Street, they're going to be putting the new water main down? Or are we talking about wiping that?
I've got the contact from, Dan gave me the contact through the county on someone to talk to about possibly, when they go back to fix it, make it wider. And so we need to start those discussions, but it is on the radar.
And how far out is that?
A long ways, not to the end of the year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they're going to wait. They're going to wait until it's wet to do it.
Yeah. So that, it didn't make sense at first when Dan had told, can I chime in?
Yeah, do it.
So the conversation I had with Dan was, you know, so they'll wait till fall. And I'm like, okay, wait till it's raining and then start digging in the mud. And it makes sense. Well, we need the extra water supply because when they're working on their water lines, there's these major losses of water. So they need to be able to maintain, rather than do it in late August or September when there's fire hazard and we could have a minute to watch the fire.
So they wait until they've got lots of water, so purge lots of water. Makes sense.
I just saw in twice in the last two days, people getting off the sides of...
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So it is on the, it is on the radar.
And the road is actually like a drop off to get off the road.
Yeah.
Normal people.
Normal people? Not everyone has doulies. So yeah, so this is, wish list is kind of just one of those things that we do every year and it's to satisfy the state requirements.
What about Eighth between D and B? That's not on there.
That's because that's one of the roads that's going to get fixed this summer.
It's on a different list.
It's on the, it's happening in three months list.
This is 2024 or 2029?
Yeah. And this is a proposal of...
Yeah, it's just a wish list.
I'm going to motion that...
You don't have to motion.
No?
You guys can just tell us, "Do you want me to make any changes to this before we schedule the public hearing?"
No, I don't. Well, A Street, you said you're going to, we're talking about reallocating funds from the city.
Hopefully. It's not a certain yet.
Might as well leave it on the list. This is something that you got pushed back. On the previous one.
Yes.
But for example, East Street, 10th Park, if they build those houses, then they will pay.
Absolutely. Yes.
Right?
Yes. Yeah, the developers are going to be, once again, you know, we haven't gotten the final application. We have the pre-application for that subdevelopment subdivision. We're actually, I think we're expecting it this week, I think, is what they were telling us. So it's happening.
So then that would go off.
Yeah, yeah. When they, when they go through that, they're going to, part of that, part of that subdivision requirement requires a traffic study and the requirements will be to do half-street improvements. And so we'll have a 20-foot paved road back there. Any change, proposed changes? Okay, that's all I needed. We'll schedule a public hearing and then you all can vote on it and we'll submit it to the people and be good for another year. Moving on to item number two, council to consider ordinance 2023-06, amendment number two of the 2023 annual budget. Pretty normal for cities to do a budget amendment as we're getting towards the middle of the year. You can see in your packet the description of why we're changing a couple of things. Obviously, we had two, we paid two clerks for a little while, and so that we adjusted our... Yeah, and so you can see here the line items why we're adjusting the budget so we can stay within, pretty minor adjustments, really. Salary-related, insurance-related, training-related. The one larger one was for sewer. So make it retroactive to the beginning of the month?
On the sewer, why do they need an extra phone line?
So the new building, we didn't have any phone lines down there before at all because we had a shack. Like, like just, like a kid bus stop at the end of the driveway. And so the new building, all of the sensor equipment is all wired into the computer and the computer interfaces with internet. And our wastewater operator can be at home and check out the status remotely. And if there are any alarms, the system can also call out and tell our wastewater operator immediately that there's a problem. And so it's for... Right. Well, missed a couple of things when we designed the new plan.
And there's a Z vehicle replacement, what's wrong with that one?
So we don't have a, there's no money involved in that just yet. We want to create a line item for saving every year so that we can replace the truck. So in this, in this case, we would just be creating a line item in the budget. It would be zero at the moment. That's correct, right, Lisa? It's zero, so there's no money associated with it. But going into the future, we'll be able to put money in there and then leave it. And then council can see that, all right, here's, you know, an equipment reserve fund for the pickup truck. Every year, we put $5,000 in it or whatever. And then over the course of 10 years, we have enough for a pickup. Well, probably not in 10 years. Price of pickup probably wouldn't be $50,000. It's not $50,000 right now. Maybe my math is a little off, but you know what I mean. So it gives us a place where we can save. That truck will probably not last this year.
Sorry, I had to check in on that one.
I've been talking, John, about getting it into the shop, getting into a shop. There's some issues with oil in the coolant and it was overheating and the clutch went out. Yeah.
That's a big one.
And so...
And we just have the one.
Just the one. It's a side thing, a little off-topic, but I'd like to eventually get him, like one of those little gators with a... With like a little bed in the back, a little dump bed. And then instead of driving a big 250 around town all the time and stop, go, stop, go, just having a little...
Yeah, one of those little Daihatsu's. They're a little bit heavier.
Just a little, just a little thing, you know, that's designed for that.
Weed whacker.
Yeah. Just around town. And it's cheaper than a big truck, too.
Absolutely.
But anyway, that's not, that's not on the budget amendment for now.
What about the park donations and allocating funds?
So... So Park Board, the parks get donations from people, whether that's purely someone saying, "I want to donate to the parks." Or whether it's like the Christmas czar, where all that money. During the, during the, when we did the budget at the end of the year, the few thousand dollars that they had in there, it ended up getting, getting adjusted and they, and that money got put in a different part of the budget instead of staying in the donation. So the donations didn't get rolled over in its entirety from 2022 to 2023. And so this is just putting the money back that they had donated last year so that they weren't losing donations. We didn't want to pay the, the, buy lawnmower, buy lawnmower gas with park donation. Neither do I.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2023-06, amendment number two for the, of the 2023 annual budget.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve ordinance 2023-06. Do we have a second? Second of Ms. Ferguson, just further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Last item of city business, council discussed procurement policies allowing limited mayoral authorizations. So if you remember last meeting, maybe meeting before last, council approved updating the city code so that the park board could spend up to a couple hundred dollars without asking for mayoral approval. So in the code, the only place where it talks about what the mayor can and can't spend is, once again, in the park board where it alludes to the possibility that the mayor can only spend up to $500. And it's in the park board. It doesn't say it anywhere else in the code. And so that's always kind of been a little issue for me because, you know, at City Hall, we have an administrative policy that says what the mayor can and can't do. But we thought it would be wise to put limits within the city code that are spelled out. Exactly what, what the mayor can and can't do. And so this before you is an example of another city that our attorney worked with. And so that's where those, that's where those numbers came from. And the idea is that we would update our code and it would have very specific limits in there on things that the mayor can do and can't do. For instance, if you remember at the end of last year, we put gutters on the Warden Park Shelter. It was a $1,400 contract. We went out to bid. We put together an agenda bill. We had all the information come to council, the contract and everything. We did all of that work for a $1,400 contract. And the idea would be on certain things, we, council can set the dollar amount. The, that, all that work wouldn't, all that red tape wouldn't have to happen. If it's a small enough amount, the mayor can just go out, you know, call the company up, get the $2,000 project going, because it was already in the budget. We already talked about gutters last year when we approved the budget. And so it can just get done and then we don't have to do all that other red tape. But we could set limits on that. And we can also set limits on other kinds of spending as well. So here's another example. The computer at City Hall goes out. We need one right away. You know, the, we have a office, office equipment budget line item that council has approved. The mayor can spend up to, you know, that limit, but not over without council approval because at that point, he'd require a budget amendment. And so we could put those kind of limits in as well. So that seems like a no-brainer. I mean, obviously, you shouldn't spend more than the budget allows, but it's not written down anywhere. And so this would just write it down.
This is a recipe for disaster. And I'm telling you why.
Okay.
Because what's the cap going to be?
The cap is whatever you... The cap is whatever you set it to.
It shouldn't be that. You should bring it, phone call, whatever. We're all more than willing to say yea or nay on it. But doing it this way, that's suspicious. I don't like that.
And that's fine. I mean, if that's not what council wants to do, if we want to take the long route and continue to do it that way, that's fine, too. I just want something in writing, whether it's...
That will also keep us honest.
Now, 10 years from now, you know, how, you know, again, it's up to the city, right? How much council oversight do you want? You know, I believe that I don't think the mayor should have that much power, which is why you should have a limit on the number, right? If, whether it's $1,000, $2,000, whatever it is. So regardless, even if it's in the budget, you should never go over this much without council authorization. So, but anyway, this would give, this would at least give us a tool. And the idea is if you...
You always need council approval because the people are looking, "You got it. How much limit? What are you doing with all this money? And we keeping you honest."
So what is the process if the printer goes down?
So right now, it's, it's, it's like the budget limits, right? We have, like, if we have, like, at the end of the year, council had the budget, we approved the budget. It says we have $1,000 for office equipment. You know, if the, if the printer dies, you know, we just go online, we buy another printer as long as we stay within the budget. That's the way it is right now.
And as it is right now, like you, the mayor's approved to, you know, to do that, or you have to approach us?
It's not in the, it's not in the code. It doesn't say it, you know? So it's kind of on our system, you know?
All right, so we should establish some written guidelines.
I would, I would like something. Within, obviously, within reason. There are times when we don't want to necessarily wait around for council, you know? I mean, there, when we need a computer, you know, we should buy a computer, not wait around three weeks for the next council meeting, right?
It seems like, I mean, it seems like City Hall could, you know, have like a certain amount of accessible petty cash to take care of things.
Petty cash isn't good to have in...
Well, not petty cash, but I'm just saying like accessible funds to, you know, do that without having to wait two weeks for a meeting.
That's why there'd be, there'd be some type of set guidelines and limits.
But that's what phones are for.
Well, then it's, but then...
It's not like the old days, you know, write a letter or something.
But keep in mind, then, I mean, that's not even, you know, open public meeting and everything. If we're calling all the council members and say, "What do you want to do?" Might as well have a special, we'd probably have to have a special meeting to do some...
I would rather have a special meeting, keep everybody honest. And the people are seeing that we're being honest and it sounds sneaky and I don't like it.
Compared to what we're doing now. I mean, because what we're doing now...
We having secret meetings that I don't know about? Okay, then what's the problem?
There's no, there's no rules right now.
Okay, the rule is you have a council meeting to keep everybody honest. You have to call three people. That's fine.
That's not even a rule.
That's not the rule right now.
Well, that should be the rule.
Well, that's what we're talking about, is making a rule.
Then that should be the rule.
But just calling, just calling three people isn't going to work. We have to have three people all together at the same time.
Now, I would, I'd recommend some type of limit, but it shouldn't be for everything. I mean, if council approves a budget at the end of the year, you know, like the office equipment is... You know, with $1,000, and then we operate within that limit. If we need a computer, we can go get a computer. You know, we're not going to go over that limit. That's what, that's what the budget's for, right, council?
That's just for the computers, but the examples here are for other contracts.
Yeah, and that's why this says sample right on it. This is taken from another city that's much bigger than Vator. Well, and said, we don't have to have all those lines. We can remove certain things. If we want every single contract regardless of a dollar amount to come to council, we can still do that.
And the office equipment? I can probably agree on that, but the rest of it, no.
If this is something that council's interested in, we don't have to do anything. But if this is something council's interested in, you know, we can, we can work this and come up with some numbers that we think are reasonable for our city.
Well, this is all subject to state counting audit.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, we get audited to death and this stuff. I don't see what the danger is. Looking at this sample, this is the type of minimum. This would be very small operating as a gesture.
Right, yeah, I mean...
Operating in a city and you have to call everybody up every time something happens? It's not doable. It's not feasible. It's not the way businesses operate. It's not the way government agencies operate. I don't know where your mistrust go from, but...
Um, because I, I read this, I see the news, I see what's going on. That's a, a recipe for, for approving stupid stuff we don't need. And a lot of people, the, the citizens don't, don't want it either. And so that's wrong.
Well, I'm saying is I, I'd like for limits to.
Office is fine. But the rest of it is just new.
So we can, we can leave it the way it is and the, and the, and the mayor, um, operates within the, within the budget. And then all contracts come before council. That's the way, that's the way we've been operating right now. Yeah, it was just an idea. There's no, like I said, we haven't spent any time on this, we haven't spent any money on it. It was an idea that, that I saw and I thought I, I should bring that to council and see if that was something council was, was interested in, so.
But I said, I'm willing to work on the office. Because that's important.
Okay. So would you like to see a, a reworked version of this? That's more Vader style.
Safer for you, for the, the mayor to have some rules. And that's what we are wanting to do. And so, yes, I think we should go forward with this.
Was something like this?
Something like this.
Okay.
Well, we'll. Something, I think, I, you know, chime in, you know.
These are big numbers.
May, yeah, I'm just saying like the things that are listed here, you know, maintenance contracts, public works contracts. Anything that's contractual should, you know, go through the, the city council. You know, I don't see why, so when, if this does get edited, that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see stuff like that on there.
All right. Thank you for the input. Uh, any other discussion on this? Okay. Um, any members of the public have any comments?
Um, I do. Bob Goff. Um, the, uh, hundred and fifty we have left in the sewer fund, I, I think that we should look to using that for trying to get our water system back, because I'm assuming there's going to be costs involved in the process doing that. Um, it's just an idea. Thanks.
All right, good. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mayor, and this is I mean, Tager. I logged in late, so I missed the part about the street.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Tager. Um, there hasn't been any update. We're still waiting on, um, the rest of the, any of the other answers coming in. Um, so there was no, there was no decision on that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I was wondering.
Any other public comment? Okay, any other elected official comment? Okay, um, I'd like to turn the floor over to, uh, City of Toledo's representatives. They, they have, uh, a presentation for you. Take it away, Toledo.
Well, I didn't put nothing in writing. I'll sort that one out. We were here to discuss your police protection. And what you guys would entertain the idea of, of joining forces with us. Um, basically, the coverage would be more. By my figures, I've been doing this with Winlock many years ago. I was on that program. And we have more, more officers involved than what we have here right now initially, because we're in the process of hiring, hiring more officers as we speak. It's been put out there. Basically, like I said, the main thing would be more coverage for Vader. And we have another vehicle. Gas prices are going up like crazy, so we'd like to propose possibly of that new police officer to live in Vader. Save the cost of gas, response times or whatever is going on there. It's all a positive thing. I'm not degrading the sheriff department at all either. I know they've been a great job. We have been for years. I'm not doing that. I'm just seeing an opportunity to combine more forces to get more coverage, to get more protection for our citizens and Toledo and Vader. Because we're both about the same size right now. And we have seven hundred and six, I think their population is, something like that. And their population is over seven hundred also. Am I correct? So we're both about, about the same size. And some of the things we discussed with my counsel and the, and the chief was that mainly the protection part of it would be more for you guys. With the population growth is coming our way from all areas, all sides, it's going to be huge. And I think along with that, it's going to be crime. Crime, crime kind of followed up. And I've been around long enough to see that happen more and more in Toledo. Um, we're discouraging it, we're trying to control it, but we need more officers also. So I'm working on that as we speak. And right now, we're set for the next five years, we're going to have a hundred homes put in Toledo. Uh, they're averaging about twenty homes built a year. And so five years, we'll have a hundred homes just on the west side of Toledo, right up on the hill. And it's going to, in our urban growth development. And it's all legal and there's nothing I can do about it, because I keep getting asked by people, can you stop this growth? It's a no, I can't. They're doing everything legal with our urban growth development. And it's coming. And you can see the results from Winlock, how fast they're growing over there. But, uh, and he just hired another officer there also, so I think we've got three officers on staff now in Winlock, plus the chief. Um, like I said, with population, from the crime and everything else, we're going to try to get a hands-on before it happens and I was just saying, plus Winlock, it's set, I think, for our disclosure in that. But, uh, I can trace, I can get some other facts for you. They're penciled out, about twenty-two hours a day service. And, uh, the cost is way down, the coverage is way up. The crime rates are way down in both cities. And they responded to, well, at that time, I think it was five total officers, kind of chief. And the coverage, like I said, was immense. And I think we could help each other out for one. Chief?
Yes. So, uh, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen of the council, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to come here and, uh, basically lay, lay down the background of what we're talking about here. This isn't something that we came up with. Um, Sheriff Rob Snaza, we have, we have a meeting of, of the smaller police chiefs and Sheriff Rob. And that happened about, about a, I guess, about a month ago. And he, he brought it up to us. And right away, I, I, I was like, you know, I'm not going to say anything. In my mind, I thought that, uh, Winlock would take the opportunity, uh, because it's right, right down the road with the Chief Valentine. Um, he didn't say anything. So I let that lie a little bit. And then I called, uh, Chief Valentine twice and, and got a confirmation from him that he's not interested in at all in the, the Vader contract. Uh, Sheriff Rob Snaza, um, has done an extraordinary job. Um, you have the deputy right there. Um, this isn't any way negative on them at all, absolutely not. His concern was that he, he said that he's going to have to increase the price of a contract. And that there's a lot more, um, area for them to cover and they don't have as many, uh, sheriff deputies as they, as they would like. And so then he said, you guys should think about having, having a talk with the council and the mayor and seeing if, uh, you know, they would be open to the possibility of combining some sort of a joint, uh, police force in the smaller cities. And we all know the bad guys, they, they go to Winlock, they go to Vader, they go to Toledo. We all deal with the same bad guys. Um, the, the mayor did talk about a position we have open. We have a great candidate, Mr. Mayor, I had a chance to talk to you about that. A great guy that I'm going to meet with on Sunday. He's, he's actually going to come meet with me. Certified already. Um, I'm going to try to hook him in and get him on board as quick as I can. Um, so now basically what we're dealing here with this, what is an idea of combining forces and resources. And like the, the mayor said, um, I guess you have a place right here at the fire hall. I, I don't know if it's being used. So these are all things that we're here to talk about. Um, we can't say you have to live in Vader to, to the person that's applying. We can say that we strongly recommend that you consider living in Vader, or at least, you know, living nearby. You could even do something like, uh, if the person was hired, um, you know, the, the time that they're working, they, they stay at the city or the fire department, which has a place to, um, shower, I guess, or I've never been over there, but I'm assuming it has a shower and places that, you know, sleep. And then you go home on their off days. So these are all options that we have, um, to bring to you. So now you're going to ask, what can we provide to you? And again, not disparaging the sheriff's department. Um, we can provide better coverage, meaning we have more time to be here. As the mayor stated, the, uh, the growth is coming. We're going to, we're going to have the intersection here pretty soon. All our growth is going out toward I five. And your growth is coming this way. So it makes sense that eventually, um, we're going to be, uh, closer neighbors for lack of better words. And so, um, I think this could be a partnership that we could talk about option-wise. Obviously attorneys would have to be involved to, to understand the contract specifics. Obviously, the council and the, the mayor, you, you'd want to know what exactly, how many hours we're going to be over here, that type of thing. When I was hired by, by the mayor and the city council, I told them that I'm, I'm not a chief that's going to sit behind the desk. And if you ask around the city of Toledo, they'll tell you, I'm everywhere. Because I, uh, uh, veteran of the United States Marine Corps and I was taught, you know, honor integrity and do what you say you're going to do is important. And so I told the mayor that I'll be out patrolling, that's what I'm doing. Um, I do have to be in there sometimes to do, you know, paperwork and administrative stuff. But I'm more of a proactive, let's get out, community-oriented, uh, philosophy of law enforcement. So we have created what's called a, uh, community crime deterrent program comprised of individuals from the city of Toledo. And the first thing that we rolled out was a, uh, defensive tactics class for women and children. And we did that because you, you said it, everything's changing. The, the world is not the same as it was anymore. And so we need to start looking after our women, our children, you know, teaching self-defense, situation awareness. That's something we could bring over here. We have instructors to do it. We've already had two classes over there. So these are a kind of an example of the things that we can bring, uh, bring to you. So that's my pitch, um, other than the fact that we wouldn't, uh, increase the cost that it's at currently, I think. The mayor and the city council were sort of talking about that a little bit, uh, to the council, we wouldn't, uh, increase, you know, the cost that you currently have right now. We keep it the same. And I think it would be a, a good partnership. So I'm available for questions. If you have any, I'm sure you do a bit.
Until you leave.
Huh?
Until you leave, then I'll think of them.
Yeah, I have an email, I can give you an email. Um, the mayor has my email. So again, I just want to reiterate, that's why we're here to talk, you know, today as a, as a friendship and see if we can develop a partnership. And go from there.
So cost of incarcerations has always been a worry for me because it costs us, or it costs, what is it now? A hundred and seven dollars a day? And if we have, and we have had, um, we've got a citizen that was just outside the city limits, thank goodness. Um, that's still in jail since, I think it was last March, May, something like that. And with our budget being as tight as it is, the county takes care of that. Which is, you know, to me, that's a huge concern. Somebody comes in here, does something stupid and now we have to pay for them for the next year.
Sure. Then that, there, there's no concrete answer for that to give you, except that we would just do exactly what Lewis County is doing right now. The contract would stay the same. So all those costs would be, it should be covered. Um, if they're not, we can, we can have a workshop and talk about those things.
That would be something we'd have to talk about.
Yeah.
Uh, America is, I'm on the city council, so that is actually the number one thing I saw is, is, um, the county can assume that risk because they're huge and they are not that court paid for and they got that judge paid for. Um, where that's a variable that, that we would be allowing to assume that risk. So we would have to talk about that.
Yeah, and I, I think that's, again, public safety is paramount. The idea behind the community-oriented policing program is, is that the community gets energized behind the police department. So basically what we want to do is we want bad guys to say, I don't want to go to Toledo, I don't want to go to Vader, because the, the police department is proactive and the community is watching. That word gets out. I'm telling you, it does get out. And that's really the goal, so that's probably the solution to your problem. Obviously, if we can ticket somebody and give them a court date, we're going to do that. We're not going to, you know, arrest them on something that's, that they could be, you know, given a court date for it.
Yeah, I'm not worried about those ones.
But I mean, there's some departments, they'll just, they'll just, you know, they'll make arrests on, on white collar crime persons, you know, that that forces you to pay additional costs. But those are things common sense that, you know, in a small community that you don't do. So that's kind of our philosophy.
I think that what Chief was talking about, with proactive, is just trying to bring that, bring those things down before they happen. And we've seen quite a difference since he got in town with him being, maybe he's been to every church to, and here they are. It sounds like regularly he goes to the schools, he goes to talk to the businesses. Um, the residents see him everywhere. So that helps, that and it's all helps reduce. I've seen it helps reduce crime.
So with, with our contribution, what's the goal for Toledo? Add another officers, you have the chief and two officers, so you have a rotation to see those.
Yeah, so basically the.
Because not everybody works seven days a week.
Yeah, so, um, again, you don't know anything about my background, but I started in ninety-two on the Cobblewood reservation, one point two million acres. And calling in service on one point two million acres, I was the only one on. Oh yeah, so that's, that's a lot to take on. Now, now it's evolved where they, they do have more officers, so that's not the case here. So if we were to have three officers, you know, me and, and two other officers, uh, we could then provide that, uh, twenty-four seven coverage. And so if you're, if you're patrolling over Toledo and everything's looking good, you make your, what I call your appearance. You make your, you make your appearance, you know, patrolling, you come over here and patrol. And so like, for instance, on a day shift, I, I would be over there if I was on, right now I'm on a two to ten, usually working two to ten. But I switch that up quite a bit, actually. So anyways, uh, if I was on a day shift over there.
I think, I think Bob's okay to talk to.
So I, I would, I would, uh.
More given your.
Yeah, as, as the mayor says, I, I, I go, if there's a Lions Club meeting, I go in there, you know, and talk to them. Um, senior center is going on, I go in there and talk to them, I go to the schools, I go to Head Start, you know, I'm, I'm everywhere and people see me. And then if you were a part of that, then I would come over and repeat that process over here. And, and in my administration, as long as I'm here, my officers would do the same thing. Absolutely. I, I believe that you set the example, you, you establish what you expected your officers to do and they should be doing. So the people that we would hire as a, as a joint venture would, would be, uh, among that philosophy. So in other words, um, when the position came over and if we went into this agreement, you would be on the hiring board. You know, we'd have the mayor, our mayor, we'd probably have one council member of each, we'd have an elder from there, an elder from Toledo. We would have a veteran from each area, we'd have somebody from the high school from each area. So in other words, you're getting a broad array of people on this panel. And when you talk to that individual, they get to ask them specific questions and then you get to see the results and the answers of those questions. And I would be on the board too.
Do all of your police officers live in your area?
They will be, hopefully. Um, again, that's, that's a, a thing you can.
That's a rough one for them, too.
Yeah, but the people that are, we're going to attract here are, um, you know, so I, I want to, I want to commend the mayor and, and the city council for backing what I think is an extremely important endeavor. And then, in, in the entire United States of America, all the police, police departments, nobody's ever done, um, an ally for M I W. Not my own people, that is, but it's murdered and missing indigenous women and children in there. I'm Native American and I'm also French and Irish. And, um, that was brought to my attention in two thousand seventeen. I couldn't believe that all the women were missing and murdered. And as a protector and provider, I just couldn't stand by and not do anything. So I actually ran, ran and biked back and forth across the United States of America with two other Native Americans to raise awareness. Um, when I came here, you know, working with the council and the mayor, we have now adopted an additional patch that's going to go right up here. It says M I W, ally. And it's never been done in the, in the entire United States of America. There hasn't been one law enforcement program that's done that. And so that's the kind of legacy that we want. You know, we want to make people want to come to work here and say, wow, I should, I should, I came to Toledo, look what they do in Vader. Look what Toledo and Vader do. That's the goal. And together, working in partnership with you. And together, working in partnership, we can achieve that goal.
Also, on the barking dog issues, the chief delivered those hand-delivered those, the barking dog residents have had nuisance dogs, and things get reacted real quick.
What about rogue cats?
Well, I have orders for cats, new dogs.
The barking dog, the barking dog was right across from the mayor's house. I'm thinking, oh my gosh.
And I was waiting for four hours in the morning, I called him.
He was not happy.
I was not happy, camera.
At least we solved that pretty quick. And that was an individual that's had a checkered past. Him and I had a one-to-one, you know, real quick. And there's respect over there, and that's what I believe it should be. You know, I don't know him from his past, you know, so I'm gonna treat him with respect from this point on, but at the same time, I expect him to respect me back.
But a small offense against the mayor. I know when he goes and delivers those nuisance things, it looks better coming from a police chief. They just respect him a little bit higher than they do me and you both who ran and handled it.
So that, that leaves a great thing. So you guys would be able to take care of our notice of violations?
Absolutely. Tree cutting, dogs, all the above. If it's a nuisance, it won't be hand-delivered, and they have somebody to fix the problem or, and our kids will come to our center, probably work somewhere, clean it up, and charge them about forty bucks an hour, and they move on.
Yeah, we had a resident just down the road on North Fifth. So clerk prepared that, right? The clerk prepared that deal to me, I walked over and I knocked on the door. The guy answered the door, and they said that in a minute we'd get a hold of it, thirty days or sixty days to deal. I opened the door, and I said, here you go. He said, you take care of this, you have fifteen days, I'm gonna come back in fifteen days if it's not taken care of. Here's the tickets I will be giving you. Just like that. And three days later, it resulted in a problem solved.
Chief, I think we're just here today to introduce the concept to y'all. It makes sense to me, from us being two tiny towns with insufficient budget, that if we come together and, you know, divide by a bigger number, it allows us to hire a third officer, which, which, it's not that we're looking for that third officer for ourselves and you'll get our leftovers, it's more that it would be kind of your, that, you know, you'd have a third of the force, essentially, it would be our intention. And I don't know what all the details are. I do, I do know that he gives us twenty-four-seven coverage, but honestly, they need days off. And I like the idea of them being able to have a day off where they're on call, and I think you could pull that off to three people, or, you know, where you have your weekend is off without being on call, where you have two on call at twenty-four-seven on duty or on call. It's, I mean, I think it's something worth talking about, whether, you know, if we wanna have a workshop or something, or y'all talk about what you're interested in, and maybe our two councils can get together and see what it looks like. We're not looking to make money off y'all, we're not looking to augment our police force, we're just looking to have a bigger...
What is the, what is the budget of the Toledo Police Department?
Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Did you hear that, Bob?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, it was, he said two hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
And what do we pay right now for us?
We're a little over ninety.
Thank you.
Another big part, like the chief mentioned too, is your council and the mayor and everybody be involved in the choosing of an officer, which I think is, you gotta have that. You gotta agree to it, we gotta agree to it, we get the best guy possible for the job. And I think that would work, especially when you get to speak about something, like you said earlier, we combine the city stuff, and we say, I helped do that way back when, such-and-such a year. That's a good feeling, folks, to say you accomplished something, I came together and it's gonna work. It has worked before, I can prove it, I get through some more numbers if you want, but unfortunately, things happen, and it was resolved through the mayor of Winlock. Anyway, that's just an announcement, I wanna move forward. And I think a great thing for us would be to combine right forces, you know?
We're also talking, we're also talking with Winlock and Natavine for potentially combining, we're not sure what we're gonna do yet, but combining into their municipal, into their municipal courts system, because there's issues going on with county and with the public defender in the county. So I don't know if you all are, I don't know who does your court, if you do something different with it.
Lewis County?
So did you, did you sign a contract with Public Defender? So you're operating on, okay.
Lewis County handles everything.
Yeah.
So they're having to deal with that, that's probably why the price is going up, because the Public Defender is gonna be, it's gonna be like over four hundred dollars a unit, whatever a unit is, whether that's, you know, a traffic ticket is half a unit, and then you have a public defender, then that's expensive. And so we're looking at switching potentially to Winlock and then lowering our costs there as well. And so that would be something that we would talk about if we get that part.
I have reached out to Sheriff Snazza, I haven't heard back yet, about a rough estimate on what he thinks our contract may look like next year. As you know, our contract with the sheriff is up for renewal at the end of this year. And so I know it's, probably hasn't done as analysis yet, but if they get a number, at least five percent, at least ten percent, you know, I'm curious, so I can feed that back to you.
I thought on the last agreement, it had the next contract number.
The steps?
Yeah.
We can take another look at that, too. But that is a consideration for you all, you know, money is, you know, it's not all about money, but it's all about money, you know? And so...
We don't have a facility, so...
And so there's...
We got a jail that has a brand-new roof on it.
And a foundation. Don't know what, they're not getting it out of that cell.
A park's gonna start locking you up. You got a phone over there?
So I'll get that information for you all. You know, and then also, obviously, you know, this is a big decision for the city. I would recommend that you all think about it, maybe talk to your neighbors about it, see how people feel. I know one of the big things people have always talked to me about is wanting, wanting that neighborhood police kind of feel, right? That was, that was what a lot of people always liked growing up, right? Where, you know, you knew, you knew Officer Stan was always somewhere, and if you needed help, Stan would come if you called him, you know? And...
Growing up here, like, we always had a reason, like, a kind of reserve of training officer. And so we would get a new police officer here in Vader, they'd be here for three, six months, and away they go. So you really didn't know them, but, you know, the sheriff's department, they stop by, they're talking to the neighbor kids too, you know, so...
Absolutely.
I think all the officers these days do a good job of public engagement as well as you can, because people are so guarded these days. It's weird.
Not everyone is just chipper happy and outgoing as you.
I'll talk to anybody.
It also means a lot for community involvement with the chief. I mean, he works, I bet he's playing here, the constant flow of kids and people pulling up to talk to him, I mean, that means a lot. You see people like that, I just go by and smile and wait, and I know he's contacted these people, and he wants them on our side, and they report stuff to us, you'd be surprised. Chief hears something, he'll walk up, check it out, he checks it out, that's true, you know? He stops something happening before it happens because of public input. And he gets that from being out there, out and about. He's always out and about, he's never in an office. I don't see him very often, you know, but that's okay. I'm okay with that because I know he's out there doing his job. And the people like that, and like I said, we're growing and we don't know what's coming. We don't know who's coming, and it could be the rich and famous, or it could be cricks and mammals and everybody else, I don't know. I don't know my crystal ball, but I just think that we get the hours of protection out there, and the help we get from the citizens, citizens on patrol, I mean, I watch that police academy, I have a black man, Chidawala. Kind of same thing, they got things done.
Yeah, we have, we have two drones and four icicles as well, so, you know, these are all things that the citizens, the crime, community crime deterrent program, that's what they're gonna be utilizing. I have a volunteer, I gave him the title of captain, and he's just running up there, he's doing a great job, you know? And that's something that would go this way as well, you know, there'd be a counterpart created, or you guys would be part of what we already have. And they're not gonna be out there with guns or anything like that, but it's a, it's a force of people out there who are like speeding, you know, like during the cheese days and stuff like that, they can be out there directing traffic, you know, they can, you know, go in and talk to kids. One of the things that I'm gonna do next year is we're gonna recreate a scenario of what happens when you run a paddle stoplight out of a bus, you know, and a kid gets run over. We're gonna do that for the school, we're gonna show them, you know, real-life scenario, what are you gonna, what can you expect to feel when this happens? The baby or a little child being run over. And so the idea is to teach your kids respect in the schools, and they're gonna do that as well, so...
Does the, does the school allow you guys to do tactics training in their school?
Yes, Chris Rusk has been very supportive. We're gonna be doing some active shooting scenarios where we go in there and just walk through and look at the different things and areas that we have to respond to. It's something we're gonna have in one of the schools, I'm gonna be the first one there, so I'll go from police mode to Marine Corps mode real quick and take care of business to protect the children, and that's really important. But again, we established this joint venture, and the bad guys start talking, they don't wanna come to Vader, they don't wanna come to Toledo, and that's the whole idea. So we don't have to do something like that, so...
Well, we just had an answer that was last week, the week before, the bomb threat?
Bomb threat, the Toledo High School was the first one there.
He was the first one there.
Yeah.
Immediately, shut her down, lock it up, let's find out what's happening, and he's doing a great job.
The sheriff's department did an awesome job, they were there right away. Between the, all of us were able to determine the guy had hacked into their camera system and was watching the school. And he wasn't even from down here. And once we figured that out, we shut it off, and that was into that, you know, so...
Like a nanny cam thing.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions, or do you have on top of your head, anything, or any questions for me personally, answer my career, or individual, or something like that?
Thank you so much, gentlemen, yeah. And obviously, council, this is a big decision, lots to, lots to think about on your own time, talk to your family, your friends, your neighbors, kind of what direction you think the city should go. And I'll try to get some, I'll try to get some numbers for you, too.
Yeah, I look forward to a future meeting on the topic.
And to be completely honest, the real issue here of why these two are pushing it is they love the restaurant, Little Crane.
That's true.
I like that restaurant, that's a great restaurant.
More excuses to come to town.
Lifetime membership with Bullcrab.
That's one I've never seen before.
Put that in perspective, the officer that's meeting with me on Sunday, I'm taking the Little Crane on Sunday for breakfast.
Great interview spot.
Oh, yeah.
I meet my clients there a lot of times.
It's great food, I just love that place.
Great food?
Yeah.
Can't argue, price was right. Well, thank you.
All right. All right, if there's no other comments, that's the end of the meeting. It is seven oh six PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your time.